Take your seats so we can begin. At this time, I want to, just for the record, Charlie, I want to make sure that you have Barbara Barnes Buchanan as president. She was absent during the rule call, but she's been here for the whole presentation. And at this time, we will ask for the applicant to step forward, address the board, tell us who you are and why you're here.
Good morning. I'm Wayne Arnold. I'm a professional planner with Q Grading Minor and Associates, representing Stan Stoudt, the property owner. Stan is here and will make a few comments after I conclude my presentation. Jim Banks, who is our transportation engineer, is also here and he'll be available for questions if you have any. I don't plan to have him make a presentation. With that, I'll get started. You're all familiar with the piece of property we're discussing. It's about two acres, an existing planned development. It was originally part of what was known as the Patel CPD, which does have the hotel in it. But this parcel was broken out in 2009 as a separate CPD. We're here largely because that master plan vacated, which means Mr. Stoudt couldn't put any of the other currently permitted uses on the site without coming back to reinstate the master plan, although the zoning stays in place as CPD. So to go through the reinstatement process is essentially amending the PD. So we've done that and we reduced the square footage of the request from the 32,700 square feet to 25,000 square feet. It's a more realistic number for what you can actually place there for some of the commercial light industrial uses that we're requesting. And we're retaining the hotel use, obviously, and retaining the restaurant use as well. And part of what we were proposing to do, and I'm not going to belabor a lot of the presentation. We've had a lot of staff information here, but some of the key points that were part of the original approval, as we heard Mr. Stewart and others mention, there was a map amendment done for the FEMA designation on the property. It's no longer within the floodway, which allows there to be development consistent with your FEMA flood elevations, and it doesn't have other requirements. Some of you who have been around long enough would realize the flea market to our west, for instance, that's built on pilings, and it was built on pilings and elevated above ground because it was in the floodway. So you had to accommodate floodwaters coming in onto the property so it didn't come up on your building. So that isn't what we're facing here because of the way the river and the new flood requirements have been calculated. We don't have that requirement. We are in the interchange commercial designation. We are asking for uses that are consistent with the future land use category that we're within. The mobile homes that do surround us are the inconsistent uses, and long-term, your plan does not envision there being mobile home parks there. Certain multifamily uses are permitted, as we saw, most of you were here for Benita Exchange, whom I also represented, just south of Benita Beach Road in this quadrant of the interchange. Multifamily, which were approved there, would be something in the future that could be permitted here, but mobile homes are not one of those uses. So, long-term, they are the use that would hopefully be redeveloped into something. We did add some uses that Mr. Stoudt has been involved in commercial real estate for many, many years and has an understanding of the market. We added certain uses that we believed were going to be, sorry about that, potential uses that made sense here. The Contractors and Builder Group One, those are contractor offices. It doesn't allow there to be heavy equipment storage and things of that nature, but it does allow business offices for those. Indoor self-storage, mini warehouse, was another use that we thought has some certain market value here. As was mentioned, this is three lots removed from Benita Beach Road. The property's not visible from Benita Beach Road, especially with the hotel property immediately in front of us. So those uses, we thought, did make sense, and they didn't have to have the high exposure that others would while they're there. And of course, the use that is getting, you know, 90% of the discussion point today is the outdoor storage component and very much as a temporary use. And I'll let Mr. Stoudt address that more specifically when he makes some of his remarks, but this is very much a temporary use that we're looking at. And whether it would be for a landscape business or somebody else who wants to be here, it is very proximate to the interstate. It makes a lot of sense for people who do, not just traveling tourists public, but for working people who have regional businesses that serve both in Lee and Collier Counties, it makes a lot of sense to want to be here for your use. Easy access to the interstate, you've got access to two gas stations, a hotel. I mean, there's a lot of reasons to be here if you're a business, so that makes sense. And what I would say with regard to the temporary nature of the outdoor storage component, it was previously a use that was permitted. It had time limitations on it. We're willing to accept the same time limitations, and the five years may sound like a long time, but by the time you have to go through and get the approval, go find a tenant, sign a lease for that tenant, make the improvements that are required by your conditions for that use, you have to recoup your investment. Somebody doesn't want to come in here and lease the piece of property from you if they can only have it for a very short period of time. It doesn't make economic sense to go ahead and restage your entire business here, plus pay for and ask what you're asking Mr. Stoudt to do to pay for certain improvements. And I would also, you know, keep in mind, we've talked a lot about buffers, and we're in agreement with what staff is recommending to you, but they've also imposed a standard where we have an opaque fence along Oakland. So if there's concern about people seeing the storage, and keep in mind, the storage is limited to 15 feet, but the vehicles, obviously, they have to traverse under the interstate overpasses, and I think most of the vehicles are going to be less than, you know, 13 feet on average because those pieces of equipment have to get under our overpasses. So keep in mind that what we're talking about, so I know that Jackie mentioned we were in disagreement, but we actually are in full agreement with all of staff's recommended conditions and even with the revised conditions that came out earlier today. So we think we are very compatible with the neighborhood. We know, long-term, that we are going to be because we expect to be surrounded by either high-density residential or probably more likely commercial uses on Oakland because of the proximity to at least what's now a signal. And we acknowledge that at some point DOT may decide to close up that access point. It's been discussed since I've been practicing in the city of Benita Springs. It may happen one day. It may never happen, but we're willing to live with all of those conditions. Got just, I don't know how many of you all have been out on the site, but, you know, that was the original master plan that was approved. Very detailed, has a lot more detail that's actually on the master plan than we have required today in the city. That was our zoning master plan we're proposing. We developed an alternate plan just to show staff along the way what kind of that translates into when you redevelop as one of the more permanent uses, how that equates to being able to retain the heritage trees that exist on site and actually put in parking and water management that would meet your code. This is a photograph of the front of the site looking back toward the adjacent hotel. You can see the condition of the property. This is, again, looking down Oakland, and this is across the street. And you can see that those mobile home parks are not what the city is encouraging long-term in this area. But the reality is unless people like Mr. Stoudt come along and have an economic incentive for improving their property, the rest of Oakland Drive isn't going to improve either. So, you know, there's some incentives here, you know, to help Mr. Stoudt get to where he needs to be, and he's got a vision of where this property can be, and I can assure you it's not short-term storage for the property. It's not going to get the economic return that he expects on the property. I'm going to let Stan get up and say a few words and talk a little bit more about the economics of what he's attempting to do here and why this makes sense, and then I'll make some concluding remarks. It's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Stan Stoudt, and I am the managing member of the LLC that is the applicant. And I would like to make a couple of remarks. First of all, I, as a former member of the City of Fort Myers Planning Board for several years and as a sitting member of the Lee County LPA, I understand the time and dedication it takes for you to do what you're doing, and I appreciate the time that you're giving back to your community, as do I. Point of fact, the western border, while it has been described as being the overflow parking of the flea market, that is true, but it is also impaired by the fact that it has 100-foot FPNL power line easement that parallels my property, making it very unattractive for these uses that I would prefer to see there, but can't overcome that. As Wayne had noted, we are decreasing the intensity of the uses that had previously been permitted, and we are diminishing the number of deviations that were previously granted so that we can accomplish this goal. The hardship that I'm facing is I have a property that has a zoning, but with the expired MCP, I can put to no economic use. I have to come back and I have to get some sort of an economic viable use for my property in order to monetize it. This month, I'll have the privilege of paying my taxes, grateful that I'll be able to do that, but I need to get revenue to pay those taxes, to fix the fences, to keep the grass cut, to trim the trees. And with no economic viable use, I can't do that. I had marketed this property for the previous owner for about four and a half years, and because the property has zero visibility from anywhere on Burnstour Road, my signage and other marketing endeavors only really generated about 10 calls. And I'm not the smartest guy in the room, but when eight of those 10 calls are for people that want to put it to some sort of vehicle staging and storage, that's pretty obvious to me what the market is calling for right now. I share your concerns about this quadrant and its future going forward being more aesthetically appealing. I will endeavor to make it more aesthetically appealing by complying with the 21 deviations, not deviations, conditions that the staff has saddled this application with. I'm not contending with any of those conditions. I want it to look better. I'm here to make this property look better. I can't make it look better if I don't have some sort of economic viability. There's been discussion about perhaps diminishing the five years of the open storage application. And while I can see the reason for that concern, I haven't monetized these 21 conditions that are being foisted upon me, but I can tell you, for me to recapture that capital, it is impossible to do that in three years. You're talking sidewalks, you're talking even to my driveway, you're talking buffers, opaque fences. These are large capital expenditures that I couldn't go to the marketplace. And as Wayne had mentioned, by the time I find a tenant, I negotiate a lease, I go through the limited DO process, which addresses many of the concerns that were voiced today. I've already burned, if, best case, I've burned a year. So I'm going to have to get a tenant that's willing to accept a three- or four-year period in order to move and stabilize their business. So the purpose of that is not my long-term game, but it is me responding to what the market says they're willing to pay. And I need that five years in order to recapture the capital, which is non-financial because if I have a three-year period, there's no lender that's going to monetize that for me. So that's why the five years. The news press declares me their commercial real estate expert. I don't self-profess that, but that's what I've been coined. I can tell you with empirical data that Benita Springs has a dearth of industrial vacancy. It has less than a 3% vacancy. Your market is dramatically underserved with people that are necessary for your economy and your market to thrive as a fully working economy. I don't anticipate, nor do I foresee this being some high-bay, heavy-intensive thing. What I anticipate, as I transition through the open storage, and I'll show you a picture in a minute, is something that is much more aesthetically appealing. When I respond to people, those 10 calls, and I can actually get them to the site, their interest becomes quelled, if not absolutely destroyed, when they see what is the ominous pale that the adjoining condition of the properties casts over my property. When they see the fact that I've got this FPNL easement, it makes it very difficult for me to get anybody that wants to do a five-story over-parking hotel excited. So what I see is a progression, and this is a stair step to get us there. I'm willing to expend further amounts of my capital to make this area better. Virtually, if I did any of the 21 conditions, it would make this area better. But the surrounding neighborhood, and I'm pleased that, you know, they have a place to live and that everybody needs a place to live, but the egregiously dilapidated condition of these properties makes it very, very perilous, if not impossible, for me to put this property to a higher and better use in an instant-type of instant-coffee way. I further believe that this interim use, while I migrate to a more permanent use, will even diminish traffic on Benita Beach Road as follows. I believe that many of the residents in the immediate area could be employees that would not have to be mobilized or could just walk to a place of business that would employ them. Secondly, as Wayne had alluded to, many of these people that are interested, of the 10 that have expressed an interest, they want to have access because they have accounts that are up and down I-75. So by diminishing the distance that they travel on Benita Beach Road to get to their accounts up and down I-75, I think is a way to diminish the traffic on Benita Beach Road. This really is a vehicle staging and storage interim use. I have, at the suggestion of staff, it was unbeknownst to me, I have gone to the other user that is non-compliant with code enforcement on the southwest quadrant. I can look you in the eye today, and I can tell you, that is not a use that will be permitted on a property that I own. How can you promise me that? Well, not only will your code enforcement be attacking that type of flagrant offensive use, but I'm going to have a lease that is going to give me rights that will prevent that sort of outdoor storage of palm fronds and what have you. In the application, in fact, Jackie had conditioned that there is no chipping, mulching, storage of bulk mulch and those sorts of things. That's not going to happen on my property. That's not the kind of property owner that I am, nor that I want to have there. There's been much ado about the hazardous conditions. And while I certainly concur and am supportive of those, your concern is minimal, minimal, compared to my concerns of those environmental maladies occurring on my property. Because if that property gets contaminated, and I'm just finishing cleaning up 5100 Ty Street, it's the Goodwill's home, it's their headquarters. We're about $170,000 into mitigating a chlorine contamination, and I cannot tolerate that sort of adverse impact on a property that I own. So I am not looking to go in and put some sort of, I believe the reference was a tanker truck that gets indiscriminately hosed down. That's not our intention. My lease will have prohibitions against that. And many of the things that Jackie is calling for, handlers of those materials, to get licensed to handle those materials, have to have those safeguards already in place. As it relates to the improvement of Oakland Drive, I am willing but unable, without a permanent structure and the financing that would go with that, to improve Oakland Drive out of my own pocket. This interim storage is not going to be able to be financed based upon the income and expense that it creates. I am willing and will do my best to extend Oakland Drive five feet past my current driveway. I am not sure of the cost to create a sidewalk that runs the entire distance of my property, but I am empirically aware of the fact that I am 148 of the property owners that access their properties via Oakland Drive. I am aware that I am less than 3% of the assessed, or really the just value, of those 48 properties that access Oakland Drive. I am willing to participate at a level commensurate with my ownership to improve Oakland Drive, and perhaps an alternative strategy for that is to create an MSBU where we, as a neighborhood, collectively formulate a plan to create and improve Oakland Drive and cost-share that proportionate to the ownership and the benefit of the recipients. So I am here simply because I have a piece of property that I think has economic potential but that I have been unable to deploy in any economic fashion because of my master concept plan being expired. And I'm here to try to remedy that so that I can find some economic use that the market is saying is demanding that property to get me to the point where I can do a better use. So in conclusion, and I have a preview of these slides, in conclusion, when I go to my property, or if I'm fortunate enough to take somebody to my property and they come see this, as has Mr. Forbes and Ms. Quimby, this is what is. This is what I have to try to overcome. And this is what can be. This is what is. This is what can be. You may recognize this building that Steve Hovland just completed on Old 41. I sold Steve the property, and this property is about $97 a square foot to build. He's getting like $18 a square foot in rent. I can't get $18 a square foot in rent. I think I can get $7, maybe $8 in rent. So maybe I can't quite hit that complete standard, but I can guarantee you that what I would end up with versus that is very similar to that. But I need an open storage use to get me over that hump so that I can monetize this while I put these other plans in place, go find capital, joint venture partners, apply for a DO, and then try to put the property to its highest and best use. Again, I appreciate, as a board member in my own right, the time and attention you've given me today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, and I'll just conclude with, again, reminding you that we are consistent with your comprehensive plan, and I agree with the findings that Ms. Gensen has identified that we meet the criteria for rezoning the property to CPD as conditioned, and we're willing to accept all of the conditions that staff has requested that you recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. From the board, any questions of the applicant?
I have one question. A gentleman said this is what he would like to see in the future. Is this property going to be monitored from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM? Is there going to be somebody on property, on site?
The tenant that would lease this property will have in their lease the stipulations that are in this approval. Am I going to be personally there every day? Absolutely not.
I'd ask him if you're going to be there.
But if they violate their lease and they're in default of their lease, they have consequences. And how will I know that? If code enforcement sends out a notice that they're running their trucks, they're going to get a default notice from me as their landlord.
Realistically speaking, code enforcement is not going to be out there every single day unless somebody complains about it, okay? And the chances of somebody complaining out in that area are very, almost nil. That's why I'm asking, will somebody be on-site to monitor what goes on in there on a daily basis?
The only, and if I'm misunderstanding your question, I apologize, but the person on-site to monitor that would have to be the tenant, the general manager, the production man, whoever, they would be responsible to be complicit with the lease. Is there a different type of monitoring that I'm missing?
No, I just feel that somebody should be, I just want to know if somebody will be on-site to make sure that the rules are followed and that they're governed, simple as that.
If you leased the property, would you have provisions within your lease that required them to have the proper monitoring and surveillance to make sure the property does have the monitoring?
And again, I may misunderstand it, but the only person that's going to do that is going to be the tenant. There's going to be somebody whose job's on the line if they lose it.
Right. If you negotiate a lease, would you have it where the tenant would have such requirement?
To be complicit with the conditions, yes.
Is that typical in a AAA-rated lease?
I would love to think I'm going to get a AAA-rated tenant.
Good point.
Mr. Serp, are you asking for someone to physically be present during operational hours or some type of camera system?
Well, I'm assuming there's going to be some kind of surveillance, camera surveillance. But my question is, if this is going to be operational seven days a week, all right, who's going to monitor what goes in, what comes out, if there's nobody there, other than any surveillance cameras? Now, you have most of your storage facilities and that, there's always somebody there to monitor them.
So you want someone physically on-site?
Right. That's what I'm talking about.
And to that question, now that I better understand it, yes, there would be a human being on-site that would be part of the employee of the tenant that would be leasing the space. Now, you raise another specter, and it has come to my attention that there's a dearth of self-storage in your market. And I haven't done the study. I can attest to that with empirical data. But, you know, that if there were a self-storaged dearth, and those are largely REITs now that own those, then that would be much like you would expect to see a keypad and monitor, that kind of stuff. But I don't know that that's the use.
Okay. Thank you. We have another question, Mr. Worster?
Yes, I do. I want to open up the idea about, in discussion about the 90-room motel. I appreciate that's already existing. In the site plan that was presented a little bit ago, shows a total plan of parking. And that involves, I counted 95 parking spaces total. I believe it would require by code 1.32 parking spaces per room. You have 95 parking spaces. The maximum that would accommodate is a 72-room motel. I would like for you to amend your request from 90 to 72.
For the record, I'm Wayne Arnold. Let me take a stab at answering that, Mr. Worster. Even the plan that was part of the adoption of the 2009 approval, it's still a conceptual plan. There was a deviation that was approved for parking. That has been deleted. Whatever proposal that Mr., that our client or his group comes forward with will have to comply with your minimum code requirements. Again, we have a conceptual plan. There's all kinds of alternatives for us to try to meet that code requirement, which may include reducing the number of hotel rooms, but it may also mean putting building over parking in some form.
Well, I counted the parking that was under the building. Those 17 spaces.
I didn't prepare the plan, but I don't think I've ever been involved in a zoning case where I've prepared an actual development order-level site plan that depicts all of the existing required parking. You know, we prepare a lot of conceptualized drawings, and we estimate parking, and we depict parking on there as if it's that number, but it isn't necessarily reflective of the actual required parking.
Excuse me. I don't think that we're here today to talk about, we're here today really for the interim adoption of this property.
Well, you're here for that as well. Because it's, again, as they stated before, their master concept plan has expired, so the zoning is still in effect. While this may not be part of their amendment request, it is still subject for discussion.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Wait, wait, I'm not done. I'd like to just go a little bit further, Mr. Arnold, relative to that. You're asking for 90. It can't possibly be built, frankly, your own admission by presentation. Therefore, why are you asking us to approve 90? And the reason I say that is, a year from now, you may come back in and say, oh, we already have approval for 90, and we're going to cut it to 87. And like, that wouldn't be a question. And I'm just asking you now to limit what you're going to put in there to something that practically can be built. Now, if this board would like to approve a fantasy, that's their option.
Well, my response to you would be that, one, I didn't prepare the original master concept plan. I've only seen an eight-and-a-half-by-11 version of that plan. I don't know that it accurately represents the parking-to-building ratio that you're basing your comments on. And all I'm saying is, if I can't physically fit a 90-room hotel there, it will fit whatever I can park. And I don't know for a fact that it's not a 90-room hotel, based on an eight-and-a-half-by-11 drawing.
Okay. Mrs. Barnes Buchanan?
Yes, hi. I just had a question on the discussions with an interim user for the parking.
Yes.
If that envisioned also having the employees that would use the vehicles that are parked there mobilized to that site and then be dispersed from there, and then if that's the case, then they would also have their vehicles, so they would need to park their vehicles somewhere while they went out in the commercial vehicles.
I think that scenario is a possibility. And obviously, we would have to accommodate, as Jackie conditioned, that we could not park in the Oakland Drive right away. We have to accommodate all of our parking on-site.
And likewise, there would be a need for some type of building, I would assume, for people to check in because they have to check in for their timekeeping associated with their hours.
There may be, and one of the uses that staff has allowed us to request would be a temporary building, some sort of temporary construction-type trailer or something of that nature.
And following along that, was the traffic analysis, did that incorporate the travel of the employees and their vehicles to that site, and then leaving their vehicles there? And then, you know, so you actually have the vehicles that are parked there overnight, and then you've also got the employees coming and dropping off their vehicles, and then after work is done, leaving.
Yes, understood. Mr. Banks did do our traffic analysis, and I'm pretty sure that he and your city's traffic engineer decided that the proposed restaurant use is actually your highest trip generator of any of the uses that have been requested. So his maximum traffic analysis and the trip cap were all based on that use, and I don't think we envision exceeding that for the temporary use.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
One question I have, Mr. Stoudt, you kept referring to tenant as singular. Are you envisioning just one tenant for storage on this property, or are you going to have multiple tenants?
That's a good question. And my envisioning is based upon the eight calls that I've had that were all for some sort of vehicle staging and storage, and they were all single-user type people. If we end up at some sort of a mini-storage, you know, that's going to be a big D.O. and all that stuff. But in the interim use, I'm conceptualizing one tenant for many reasons, but one of which is, I'm not going to go out and, you know, try to collect rent from three people on two acres. You know, this is, this would be much more efficient. And in my imagination, and based upon the callers that I've had, they have been national landscape-related companies that are handling the gated communities that are up and down the interstate, and as was alluded to earlier, the fact that you've got fuel right there, you've got ice, you've got food. It's a very, very symbiotic coordination of uses, and so that would be, in my mind today, what I'm envisioning.
That lends clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask for any public comment on the presentation by the applicant. Please come forward.
Call for a vote of approval.
Thank you. Pretty wordy.
Thank you again. Just take me a moment to compose myself. I was talking to my client. We were actually moved by Mr. Stoudt's predicament, so I am modifying what we are asking this board to request. Now, because the applicant hasn't withdrawn their attachment C, which is their list of scheduled uses and conditions pursuant to Section 4-131 of your approval criteria, I would like to note that we reject the applicant's conditions and schedule as too intensive for the property and the existing uses. We don't feel that it meets the goals, objectives, and policies of the Bonita Plan. Specifically, we do find that a hotel site, restaurant, mini-storage, any of those permanent uses do meet those redevelopment goals, but the temporary outdoor storage does not, hence why staff is recommending a temporary use. We also don't feel that it meets the locational and performance standards. We feel that a temporary use is kind of meeting the bare minimum of those standards, that they're not likely to be improved, to put in in such a way that they would be permanent fixtures. They'll be whatever the, you know, chain link fence with vinyl, whatever the stripped-down, best, most economical use. We understand that that is a concern, but we nonetheless do not recommend it. We also feel that it, in particularly the lawn storage and some of the outdoor uses that may be used regularly, will be inconsistent with noise, odor, dust, visual impact. So our recommendation is, at a minimum, that the zoning board adopt the staff recommendation as it was presented today. But specifically, we ask that outdoor storage of any kind be stricken from the scheduled uses. And in the event the board does wish to recommend to the city council that outdoor storage be allowed, here would be the request that we would ask for and conditions. That, one, the hours be limited to Monday through Friday. The hours seven to seven, not an objection, but this is a residential neighborhood, and there are children. Two, that either the height of the fence and perimeter buffer be increased, or the height of the stored materials be reduced, so that in no case shall those, that outdoor storage be visible from Oakland Drive. And then, three, we would ask that the property be limited in this temporary use to three years. However, based on the owner's concerns, alternatively, if you were to approve it, we would ask that no less than five years under the current ownership. And the reason why is, my clients are concerned that, they objected to this many years ago, five years from now, there's a new owner, could be a year from now, a new owner in there, and wants to make this a permanent use. So based on the applicant's ideas, that he wishes to hold this as a temporary use and then move into a more permanent use, which is consistent with my own client's goals and objectives for the property, we would say that that limited use be only to the current owner. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we've heard everybody's presentation. I would like to ask for a motion for, a motion for this case, for approval or disapproval, approval with conditions. Do I hear any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that it be approved, subject to a condition, that the temporary use be limited to three years across the board, the way it's presented in the condition, instead of five years.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to have a discussion with this. I would like to, I would have a tendency to approve this if it went along with what the attorney brought out, the points that he brought out. And I think that's very important, and I think it's important for the area, and I think it's important for the community. So if we're going to approve this, I would approve it with the stipulation that the attorney that just spoke, that is, that it gets implemented into our.
Could I make sure I understand what you're asking for? The conditions that Derek Rooney, that's the name of the attorney, spoke on, was for the hours to be Monday through Friday for seven to seven. The height of the perimeter buffer needs to either be increased, or the height of the storage decreased, so that it's not viewed from Oakland Road. And he said, three years, but no less than, three years of current owner. Now, these conditions would not be overall conditions on the master concept plan, but conditions related to the open storage only. Let me look at Derek to see.
I thought I heard five years.
I thought I heard five years also.
I heard five years.
Either three years, or alternatively, five years under the current owner.
Right.
So he wanted the current ownership, was how I read what Derek said. But Derek, you're talking that would only be for the open storage use.
For the open storage. That way, it's clear, and five years, everyone knows what was said on the record today and what the commitments were, and we're not worried about that issue. If the property sells, then it'd be a three-year commitment.
So if a tenant comes in, does the open storage, there'll be these enhanced requirements for the open storage, but it can be used for the open storage with a very limited time period and buffers. And of course, they can always move the equipment farther back, so they don't need the buff, they'd have the existing buffers, but they wouldn't need to go higher with it. And then there's the time limitation, the hour limitation for open storage, but those would only apply to the open storage. Is that correct with what you're?
Correct.
And I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Would this be considered, for instance, if a landscaping company came in, would this be considered their primary geographic location for their business? Or would they be operating out of another place, which would be considered their location for business? And the reason I'm asking this has to do with any implications, and if landscaping employees fall under the category of farmworkers, because there are additional federal regulations and discriminatory practices, which may have long-term financial implications as to the location of the business use.
I'll take a shot at that. I don't know that I know that, Ms. Buchanan, whether or not this would be the primary business location, and I don't know whether or not a landscape maintenance worker is considered a farmworker. My gut tells me they are not.
And I just want to point out that the Department of Justice and HUD came out last week with new guidance on determining whether it's discriminatory or not. I'll be providing that to the zoning board probably later today. I need to digest it a little myself first.
Okay. Is that your question? All right, we're still in the discussion stage here, and Mr. Insirpi's modification and Mr. Rooney, the three years if the property sells, I would be in favor of that, and certainly the five years for the current owner, because of all the reasons that Mr. Stoudt said. But I would like to add one additional consideration, and that is, seven to seven, the hours of operation. I would like to see it six days a week, because it sounds as if a prime tenant for this property would more likely be a landscaping company at this point than something else. And I know that they work six days a week. Seldom do they work seven. Seven is the day of rest. So I would like to just make that one change on the hours of operation for six days per week.
And would that be Monday through Saturday?
Saturday.
Okay. Or, I didn't know if it was a floating day.
Monday through Saturday.
Okay.
Good idea.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
One last question. In the event that it is a landscaping operation, where will they be putting any solid waste? Not the large debris, because I realize they'd have to move the large trees and things like that off-site, but there tend to be, as the photo was circulated, there tends to be some smaller debris that comes off of the trucks.
My apologies. I did not see the photographs that were distributed to you, so I'd have to look at that.
Well, we cited the southwest corner as an example of what it would not be, according to Mr. Stoudt's testimony, not testimony, but his presentation, which showed, we don't have those pictures, they're up there, but he indicated he would not allow that as part of his lease.
Right.
And you're not authorizing a transfer station? So while the open storage is permitted, the horticultural debris would not be permitted onsite without initial approval?
And there isn't a transfer station at the other site that those photographs are either, but.
Which is why they're in a little bit of trouble.
That's a code. Thanks for clarification, Jim.
And my last comment, I am concerned about the use, because visually, as you're even going over the overpass at Bonita Beach Road and I-75, you can see the property down to your west. And I'm concerned just about how it does look in the area. I'm concerned about the impacts on the surrounding residential units, and even though some of them are considered lower income, I'm not sure how you could replace and relocate those folks for what the price would be. It's a major issue. I don't think this really enhances that area. I think it will tend to make it look more blighted. And I'm just concerned, I realize there's an economic hardship with the owner of the parcel, and I'm not sure, you know, what the remedy is, and I haven't really thought about that aspect of it, but I'm very concerned about putting this use in there. I think it really does degrade the neighborhood, and I don't think the buffers are extensive enough between the residential uses. I think trying to get a deviation from what's existing is not necessarily conducive to good land use. And I believe that an interim use of that parking area probably does not provide for the level of integrity for water management quality in the adjacent drainage area, which directly impacts Oak Creek as well as the Imperial River. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. We still have a motion. We've had discussion, and Mr. Worster, you made the motion?
Yes, I'd like to withdraw my motion and second Mr. Insirpi's motion with, including your additional amendment to that motion.
So for clarification, the motion would be to accept?
Let me read the conditions that would be changed in this. First of all, the conditions that were changed by staff would put in the record. The additional conditions would be in new Section 8, what used to be 9 Business Services Group 2. And Condition D, right now, currently reads buffering and landscaping must be installed prior to any occupancy of the property. Now, it would add a sentence to that, that buffering for this use must be either increased, or open storage must be positioned in such a manner that there is no view of any open storage from Oakland Drive. And that was the, either increasing the buffer, or they could position the open storage in such a way that you cannot see it from there. The next one was Condition E, which again, had the staff modifications. And what I wrote, and I need some assistance from the zoning board, just to make sure I understand, is I have it as open storage, vehicle and equipment dealers in Business Services Group 2, with outdoor equipment and/or vehicle storage, is limited to a period of no more than three years from the effective date of this ordinance, but in no circumstance greater than five years under current ownership.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. I was not sure about that. Now, the only thing I have not added at this time is in hours of operation, but I will add it as new H, that hours of operation will be for this use, and just this use only, which is the Business Services Group 2 Storage Open Rental Leasing Establishment, will be Monday through Saturday, seven to seven.
Correct. That does it. That's the motion. I will second that motion.
Jim just, he seconded the motion.
I seconded.
Oh, my motion. His motion.
His motion amended with my ears.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. So.
Roll call, please.
Discussion.
More discussion?
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's.
My part of the discussion is that I think this storage use is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I think it's inconsistent with the neighborhood. It's inconsistent with the residential use that's there. I think there's a danger, as Buchanan pointed out, of misuse. It's a, whatever the motion is, at this point, with all its amendment, I certainly can't support it. I would urge us to rethink the whole issue of if this is an appropriate use for this particular piece of property at this point in time. They've had seven years of open storage use, and nothing's happened there. So that is just my opinion.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Robert Insirpi?
Yes.
Barbara Brunswick Cannon?
No.
Russ Nguyen?
Yes.
Chairman Brunswick?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
No.
Frank Wiles?
Yes.
James Worster?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you for everybody's input this morning. We have a couple of orders of business before we adjourn. First of all, I need a motion for approval of the minutes for October 18th.
I'll make a motion. Are we accepting minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And last point of business, our next meeting is scheduled for December 20th.
And I'll coordinate with Charlene to verify if we're definitely going to have it here, and we may not have a case. I was trying to work with one applicant, but I don't think they're going to be ready.
Anything to get out of a Christmas party. I'm telling you.
Yeah, the city Christmas party, that we're always invited.
Yeah, always.
Okay. At this point, then, I thank everybody. This meeting is adjourned.